Okay, calling the meeting to order. Uh, this is the meeting of the regular meeting of the planning commission for Desert Hot Springs for July fourteenth to 2020. Um, can we have a roll call? I'm gonna call the order and then we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Aragon. Commissioner Duffel.
President.
Vice Chair Nindell.
President.
Chair Buchanan.
Present. Okay, pledge allegiance. Let's go with Commissioner Aragon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic of Washington, one nation, under God.
Okay, thank you very much. Approval of the agenda. Now, Commissioner Aragon, I don't know if you were here or not, but uh, item number three is gonna be continued?
Yeah, I heard the last part of it saying it was gonna be for future agenda item.
Okay, good. Okay, so with that said, because that is a change in the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Did Rebecca, did we have a date that we had decided on for a special meeting? Have we already decided on going forward with that?
Yes, so when we get to the item, staff is gonna recommend that we continue it to the twenty eighth, um, July twenty eighth. It doesn't necessarily need to be continued to a date certain because we're going to have to re-advertise it anyways, but the plan is to do the special meeting on the twenty eighth and advertise it for that.
Okay, then we can go ahead and proceed with the agenda as is, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then, um, motion to approve?
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Hey, Commissioner Nindell, thank you. Um, and we'll have to have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Aragon.
Aye.
Commissioner Duffel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell.
Aye.
And Chairman Buchanan.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're gonna go into public comments. Do we have public comments for things that are not on the agenda?
No one registered for non-agenda, um, item public comments. However, if there's any of the attendees that wish to comment at this time, you can raise your hand and I will put you through. Okay, I don't see any. So Mr. Chair, we don't have any general public comments at this time.
Okay, excellent. We're gonna move on to the first public hearing. Considered consideration of variance, uh, number twenty dash one to reduce the interior rear setback from twenty feet to ten feet with property located six five three five two Rolling Hills Drive. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and planning commissioners. The project is located on the southeast corner of Rolling Hills Drive and Mission Lakes Boulevard within the Rolling Hills residential development located at sixty-five three five two Rolling Hills Drive. Here is a proposed site plan where the applicant is proposing a reduction of the rear setback from twenty feet to ten feet. The applicant's engineer has stated that the proposed revised building location provides adequate lateral setback from the Mission Creek fault line and should be acceptable from a geotechnical perspective. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, this request is found to be categorically exempt under class five minor alterations to land use limitations, therefore no further environmental review is required. With that said, staff recommends that the planning commission certify the CEQA exemption and approve variance number twenty dash one, subject to the attached conditions of approval and findings. That concludes my staff report. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have any discussion on this one? Any questions from the planning commission? Anybody? Okay, then I will go ahead with one. If we are moving it, the residents back, um, to ten feet, what are we doing with the front? Are we, uh, are we doing any kind of, uh, look, you're not gonna be able to live in a backyard of ten feet. Okay, so you're gonna have to use the front yard somehow if you wanna do outside space. Have we looked at that?
So they would be able to do some fencing in as long as the fencing at six foot high met the original residential setback. So they would be, you know, the future occupants would be able to work with us to try and make some room if they would like to do it that way. Um, it does have a rather large side yard, so instead of maybe using it as RV parking, they might be able to use that as a backyard because it is a corner lot, there is additional feet on the side. So there is definitely things that can be done that we can work with them on. Just because you give a variance on the rear setback does not mean that they wouldn't be able to still use, put their, you know, for instance, like I said, a wall in the front. There might be some issues again with the fault line, you know, I don't know that they'd be able to put a porch or a patio or whatever in the front because of the fault line, but we would work with them with whatever would meet the standards setbacks to use the front area.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
All right, Jim?
No, thank you.
Okay, Augustine? Augustine, are you there?
No, sorry, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, wait a second. We have to open a public hearing on this. I apologize. So at this point, I'm gonna open a public hearing and take testimony from the applicant. Is the applicant present?
Um, I have a person by the name of Chris E. Farnaby.
That is it.
The applicant, okay.
All right. Yes.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, the staff did a great presentation. I don't really have much to add. I mean, um, the property has a lot of side yard and the front yard is also substantial. So I definitely think the future residents of the, uh, of the project will have enough room, um, for whatever they need to do.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the applicant?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Questions?
Go ahead.
No questions.
No questions? Okay, good. Um, so with that, um, we'll take public testimony in favor. Do we have any?
We do not have any additional public comment.
So nothing opposed as well? Nor neutral?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, since we're doing this virtually, you can dispense with the in-neutral favor, um, opposed sequence and just general, or just public comment in general.
Okay, great. So, um, there's no need for an applicant rebuttal, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. All right. Discussion. Anybody have a discussion about this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Duffel here. I'd like the motion to approve staff's recommendation, please.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Aragon. Um, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Aragon.
Aye.
Commissioner Duffel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell.
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, excellent. Um, this is, uh, number two is gonna be fairly interesting, so, um, I'm gonna just read it. Development permit number nineteen dash seventeen and conditional use permit number nineteen dash twelve, an application for development for approximately twenty-four ninety-seven square foot convenience store with a type twenty-one ABC license at six zero, I mean, sorry, six six zero seven nine Pearson Boulevard, APN six four one zero twenty-one zero forty-eight. We have the staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. As stated, this is a proposal for a two thousand four hundred and ninety-seven square foot ground up construction of a convenience store with type twenty-one license, which is for alcohol, and that includes beer, wine, and spirits sold on the premises. This project is on Pearson Boulevard between West Drive and Cactus Drive. It is currently, so this one, this one is a little bit unique because the proposal of the project is on the commercial general zoning. Let me show you, share the site plan here. So, um, from the site plan, where the property line at the back of the store is not a true property line, that is a delineation of where the zone changes. The property behind the line actually is the new mixed-use neighborhood zone. So they are only proposing to build on, on a portion of the property and leave the remaining portion undeveloped. As you can see, it includes the convenience store parking and trash enclosures. The proposed parking meets the requirements. The required parking is ten spaces and they are proposing ten spaces. They do meet full setbacks and lot coverage. This application also includes the conditional use permit for the alcohol. There is no proposed signage at this time. The architecture is a standard architectural building, um, a commercial building, excuse me. Sorry, I'm having a little computer glitch here. Give me one second. And so it's, it's got three columns with an overhang, lot of window frontage, and tile roof. This item is exempt due to the size, from Environmental Quality Act, due to the size of the commercial building, and staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Okay, any questions staff for the planning commission?
Commissioner Duffel here, Mr. Chair, I do.
All right.
Um, what is our current saturation of ABC licenses in the city of Desert Hot Springs, particular to that area, I guess I could say?
Um, staff doesn't have, um, a map or listing of the different types of liquor licenses in the city. That is definitely something that staff can look into and bring back in the future.
I know something that's come up in the past regarding a couple of the other liquor stores that have opened up in my tenure. Um, one of the chief complaints seemed to be an oversaturation. Um, so I, I wanted to make sure to bring, bring that up and see if we had any, uh, any ideas on numbers. So if we, if we don't, that's okay for now.
Um, you know, this is near the seven eleven. I'm not sure, again, what other stores might have liquor licenses in that immediate vicinity. Um, but, but staff did not receive any complaints from the noticing, uh, within three hundred feet, property owners at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, is, is, oh, excuse me, this is here. Uh, Rebecca, is our judgment within three hundred feet as saturation?
No, it's just our normal noticing to property owners. Usually if people feel that there's an oversaturation, we usually hear from the immediate neighbors that, that they feel that way. We have not, and we have not received any response to our noticing or to our, our paper notice. So I have not received any complaints about putting this convenience store with liquor license in. That number is not specific to oversaturation. The oversaturation is usually based, um, on the census tract areas, um, but either way, the staff is recommending a, issuing a certificate of convenience and necessity as shown in the conditions of approval.
I, I believe, uh, and I, I hope I can be corrected if I'm wrong, that, um, seven eleven does not have a type twenty-one, it has beer and wine, uh, license only.
That is usually correct for those types, for that type of, um, I don't, I don't think seven eleven usually carries.
So I don't know of anybody within several blocks in any direction who would have a liquor license. Um, but just, just saying, I don't know.
But for the future, staff would be happy to prepare a map and have it ready for any future, um, ABC applications.
Um, I don't know, what do you think, Richard? I, I think that might be a good idea.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a great idea. Um, staff's done a really good job, as well as my fellow commissioners talking, it sounded a little bit to satisfy me with enough of an answer for be able to, uh, continue moving forward on this.
Okay, excellent. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and take testimony from the applicant. Is the applicant present?
Do you know who the applicant's name is?
The applicant's name is Mr. Singh, S-I-N-G-H.
Doesn't appear that the applicant is present.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, do we have, um, any public testimony on this, either favor, favor, or neutral?
We do not.
No public comments?
No, we, we do not.
All right. No need for an applicant rebuttal. Uh, so at this point, I'm closing the public hearing. Um, discussion questions to the staff?
Um, no questions for me, Mr. Chair. I've, uh, I've been satisfied thus far.
All right, excellent. Jim, may I have anything?
I don't have any questions for the staff, no.
Okay, and, uh, Augustine?
I have a quick question. Do you know what's the construction timeframe for this project? How soon are they looking to, uh, to build?
Um, I, I don't know the exact timeframe, but I do know that they are ready to get moving as soon as we approve this. They were, you know, they were pushing this forward as fast as it could go.
I just could see it developing, happening, happening right now with everything going on. It's, it's nice seeing there's still, you know, movement happening in the city.
Yeah, I think they're hoping to submit really quickly for building permits, so.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I, I did think of one question I'd like to ask if I may.
Certainly, go ahead.
Um, is this set up, uh, for, to, to come back to us for sign, uh, sign review? Or is this, uh, set up to be reviewed by staff on the signage we need to sign on there?
Um, the sign applications are at a staff level, but we did condition that it would have to have individual channel letters so that, um, we get nice signage, um, on there. But it is a staff level, we're here.
Okay, thank you. That was my last question.
Okay, excellent. Anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay, um, with that, um, I'm gonna go ahead and move, move ahead with, uh, a, uh, a motion. Now, the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration plus the, uh, the development permit, uh, needs to be part of that.
Chairman, if I can, um, this is the development permit nineteen seventeen and conditional use permit nineteen twelve. It is exempt from CEQA.
Okay. With that said, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to move staff's recommendation, please.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Aragon. Okay, with that, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. I'd like to move to a vote and we'll need to have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Aragon.
Aye.
Commissioner Duffel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell.
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're moving on to number four. The Cochran specific plan amendment, SP twenty dash four.
Chairman, I, I apologize again to interrupt. We do need to, um, formally have the development permit because it was advertised for a public hearing, so, and make the motion to continue. So we do, we can't skip number three. We do need to open it for any comments that people might wanna speak on.
Oh, you're absolutely right. I'm so sorry. Um, so let me go ahead and go with the development permit, uh, application to develop, uh, an anaerobic digester facility on nine point six, seven-six acre parcel. Um, the, uh, staff has requested that we, uh, continue this?
Correct. Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Um, due to some changes in our zoning code, a recycling facility now requires a conditional use permit, and this facility is a public recycling facility and not specifically for the Cochran development, which was originally, um, shown in the conditions. So therefore, staff is recommending you, it to be continued to a special meeting on July twenty-eighth. It will be re-advertised with the conditional use permit information as well. Thank you.
Okay, um, we don't need to open any, uh, any hearings at this point. Is that correct?
Because it was originally advertised and noticed, we do need to open the hearing, see if anyone'd like to speak, and continue the public hearing to the twenty-eighth.
All right, at this point, under item number three, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Um, are there any, uh, public, I'm sorry, is the applicant present?
Yes, the applicants are available for any questions the commission may have, and then we do have, um, public testimony by, uh, Mr. Lenny Osoro.
If I may, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if Mr. Osoro would, um, like to speak, he may certainly do so. Um, and then, in addition, uh, Mr. Osoro can also, I'll wait to comment until, uh, you know, we continue this matter, uh, until, uh, July twenty-eighth.
Um, yes. Uh, as long as I have an opportunity to, uh, ask questions on behalf of Cochran with respect to the, uh, draft conditions of approval, I'm totally fine with that. I, I won't need to do it now if the purpose is to continue it.
Uh, Mr. Osoro, that will be up to you, um, if you would like to, uh, make those comments now, or if you would like to make those, uh, comments on July twenty-eighth. And with that, Mr. Chair, I give it back to you.
Okay, um, so, sir, your decision is to, uh, to wait until the twenty-eighth?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And, um, uh, I don't think we have much to discuss here, guys, but does anybody have anything to say?
Mr. Chair, since staff's recommendation is to continue the public hearing to a date certain of, uh, July twenty-eighth, um, we recommend that you keep the public hearing open until that time.
All right.
Mr. Chair, was there, was there anyone else that, uh, we needed to take, uh, public comments among this item, or does that wait until the special meeting if that's what we decide to do?
Okay, well, my understanding is that, uh, we're fulfilling the, the requirement of the, the public, uh, public hearing at this point, but that, uh, we're going to continue and keep it open until the twenty-eighth. So we're not really closing it, we're just keeping it open until the twenty-eighth.
I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Sure. Okay, with, with that, is there anything else that we need to discuss?
Right now, the proper motion, if anybody would like to make it, would be a motion to continue the item to, uh, July twenty-eighth, uh, at our next, uh, that would be a special meeting.
All right, do we have a motion to that effect?
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Duffel, um, I will, uh, make that motion myself, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Nindell seconds. Uh, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's move to, uh, I believe we'll have to have a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Commissioner Aragon.
Aye.
Commissioner Duffel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell.
Aye.
And Chairman Buchanan.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now we can move on to, uh, uh, number four, the Cochran specific plan amendment, SP twenty dash four, and mitigated negative declaration and then, addendum, yeah, uh, ENV dash twenty dash one. Okay, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Um, I do wanna point out that, um, a lot, some of the information was available at the last meeting. Um, it was on the agenda and posted. However, um, there was an error in the redlined version of the specific plan. Um, the current version on this agenda is the correct one. The difference is, is that the sign requirements within the specific plan were shown, were not shown as an added feature as, as a redline. So I just wanted to point that out as we move forward. So for people who had reviewed the previous redlined version of the specific plan, there is a new one. So the applicant is Cochran Holings, and they are proposing a specific plan amendment to the Cochran Industrial Cultivation, um, Business Park. It is a forty-six, um, parcel project on a hundred and fifty-three point seven one acres, located on Indian Drive. Previously, the council approved the specific plan with a conditional use permit and parcel map in two thousand seventeen, um, and council formally adopted it on November seventh, two thousand seventeen. The applicant is proposing to make modifications, um, to the specific plan mixed-use zone along with accompanying changes in the development standards and design guidelines to allow potential hotel and amphitheater uses on parcels thirty and thirty-one. The staff report does show all of the diff, uh, does show the major points that I'm gonna go through, um, in a strike-through and underlined font process. There was a previous, as we discussed, uh, as the staff report says, there is a previous project mitigated negative declaration, um, and this project includes an addendum, which I'll get into a little more in the staff report. So the updates are, there are updates to the development regulations and the development standards on the specific plan table three dash five and three dash four. These have been updated, including a new structure height maximum for parcel thirty, which is proposed to be sixty-five feet. Um, the ma- Um, the maximum height for the interior parcels still remains at sixty-five feet and all other parcels are at fifty-five feet. However, the two-story maximum has been removed. This is in line with what, um, staff did with our zoning code update where we added just a height instead of a story because we've run into issues where, for example, someone has a fifty-five foot high building, they might be able to fit a third story for storage and staff wasn't able to approve it because it specifically said only two stories. So, um, so they did the update kind of to match, um, what staff was doing in the zoning ordinance, which is just to put a height limit and not a specific s- number of story limit. They also added flexibility into the specific plan. Um, the applicants, uh, raised some concerns regarding some unique ideas they might have. They wanted to have some flexibility to come to planning commission if they wanted some flexibility on setbacks, screening, height, or parking. So if there's a specific unique situation that they come up with that we couldn't, um, think about before the specific plan, they don't have to amend the specific plan. They'd be able to re- come to bring the development permit application to the planning commission for review. That application would be completely discretionary enough to the planning commission. Um, and that process, if they, you know, from their, their planning commission's decision could be appealed to city council. Another update is to the specific plan includes the land use table, allowable land use table. And again, this change is changed very similar to what city staff did with the city zoning ordinance, which is remove the separate delineation between a permitted use and a development permitted use. Basically, all permitted uses need a development permit approval. Um, with Cochillin specifically, that development permit goes to the staff level as was previously permitted through this specific plan. So that's going to continue to stay. The difference is it just shows a permitted use, um, through the application of a development permit. So that was, um, again, a change that was done. And, um, again, I requested that Cochillin do that so that it more clearly followed the updated city zoning tables that were, again, recently adopted. We also had a language regarding temporary facilities. Um, Cochillin does have temporary facilities and we've worked with them, um, through the temporary use permit. It wasn't very, it was kind of a gray area in the specific plan, so they've added the language into the specific plan to ver- make it very clear um, what the process is to get a temporary use permit for different kinds of temporary facilities at their site. You'll also notice that the specific plan, um, table of allowable uses, including the uses that require, do still, some uses do, do still require conditional use permit. Um, there are, the uses that were added to this proposal include the outdoor amphitheater, convenience store, hotel, motel, and cannabis non-storefront retail. So those are the uses that were, in addition to changing the permitted to the, the development permit to permitted, those are uses that were added. The map, um, is included in the staff report and in the specific plan. Additionally, the addition of section four point one, the sign program, is a new section. This was the section I was mentioning at the beginning of the staff report that didn't show the formatting in the redline. And this is a new section being proposed to be added, um, to the text and the exhibit. The proposed monument signs include one vertical identification pylon sign and two digital monument signs. So the specific plan includes regulations for the use of the electronic signs. This includes safety regulations, um, such as the display shall not be animated or appear to be moving. Each display shall appear for at least eight, eight seconds and shall remain blank for one second in between images. This is help to prevent distracted driving from people trying to watch, uh, moving images. It is also not considered a billboard. They will not be able to, um, they will only be able to show onsite or non-commercial messages only. No off-site messages will be allowed. Additionally, section five point three is being proposed to be added for special events. This is specifically added. I'm not gonna go into too much detail on it. This section was specifically added for the, um, event center amphitheater area that they are proposing. Basically, um, they, they've put together some parking strategies and coordination plans and circulation plans. Um, as the condition so, they will still be required to do a special event permit. So, you know, staff understands that there might be different types of events that have different effects on parking and security and things like that. So we will take a look at each event and, uh, work with them to issue a special event permit. There is, um, plans that in the future, as the events keep moving forward and staff gets comfortable with the process, that it may go to, for instance, an annual special event permit. But we've left some flexibility in the conditions so that we are able to manage the event based on the actual proposed details of the specific event. Section five point eight four was also added to clarify discharge remediation proposed by the applicant in the acro- in the agricultural zone basins. Um, this includes, um, crop production, um, and for agricultural water clarification and photo remediation system. So that is proposed in the ag- agricultural basin number one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three. You'll note that there is a specific condition in there for the hydrology and, um, process to all be approved through the public works department, as would any detention basin and the end, um, process as it relates to the detention basin. The specific plan also adds section six point five, um, which is, will allow them to apply to the city council for art in public places. Currently, the way our code is written, um, industrial zone, industrial projects just have to pay a fee. They don't have a choice to put up the art. Um, and so the applicant is requesting that, that we approve a specific plan amendment that would give them the option to put in art should they so apply. They would still be subject to the fee if they do not apply, but if they do, if they do apply and it does get approved by council, that would, they would be able to do that instead of paying. There are multiple updates to the design guidelines as well. Um, the design guidelines are considered an appendix to the specific plan, so it is part of the specific plan. I have pointed out in the staff report and I'll go over them verbally with you, all of, um, what staff feels are the major changes, um, in the design guidelines. One is in equipment encroachment. So there added an allowance for equipment to encroach in the setbacks, including the front setbacks, provided that the equipment is screened from any sidewalk or crosswalks. Um, and I just want to point out that the interior streets do not have sidewalks. So full screening, if you were to, if you were allowed to enter the Cochillin park through the gates and drive through the middle, there might be equipment placed in the front setback um, with these design guidelines. But again, it would not necessarily be seen from the normal passerby. Um, you would have to, you know, have all of the, um, proper authority to be inside the Cochillin park to even be able to kind of see that equipment. This equipment includes anything from generators, water towers. Um, I think it even allows like trash enclosures in the setback as well. So that is one major change. The next is street is parking. They are requesting some amendments to the part, how we would calculate the parking calculations. This includes allowing the private street parking to be enclosed, uh, or to be accounted as the required parking numbers. So if there's three, if the property is wide enough to have four spaces in the private street, then they would be allowed to count those four spaces or reduce the onsite parking by four spaces. Um, this again is the private street only, so this is for only people who would enter in through the, the gate, not the, not city public street. And for those parking spaces to count, there has to be sufficient width to park and still have a road. So that would be every, you know, the fire department would have to approve it as a, a parking lane, um, and still be accessible. Additionally, the plan included a parcel twenty-five community parking area. That parcel twenty-five was included in the original specific plan. However, there was no, even though it was, they were adding all of this parking, there was no allowance to allow the different users to reduce the number of parking spaces that they have to take advantage of the community parking area. So, um, they have added an allowance for five percent of the required parking basically to be reduced onsite and allocated to this community parking area. They have also added a technology and command center server basement to the security building. They've added project-wide emergency and fire access plan to the design guidelines. They've added detail for the video management system under the general prevention measures. Um, basically stating that all operations with the Cochillin business park shall conform to the unified surveillance system requirements. They've updated their site plan with the master security and fencing plan. And they've updated their perimeter landscape plan to that which was approved by MSWD. Um, to point out some of the things like the master security and fencing plan, there are conditions that require some of the fencing plan to be reviewed, such as the amphitheater and whether the police department's going to allow the amphitheater to have a gate access to the interior of the property or whether they're gonna have to completely separate it to the exterior of the property only. All of those security details are usually processed through the police department and the regulatory department for the cannabis users within the park. Staff wants to point out some recommended conditions that we have in the conditions of approval as proposed. Um, these include the fact that, um, the counts, planning commission and council previously approved the specific plan, which required the city staff to get the property owner association approval before we could approve a permit or issue a permit. And staff is recommending a condition added that states the city and any agency or instrumentality thereof and/or any of its officers, employees, and agents, including the community development department shall not be, under any circumstances whatsoever, be responsible for ensuring compliance with the property owners association requirements, which requirements are private in nature. The city and any agency officers, employees, agents not response, are not responsible for ensuring that the property owner association has approved an application or project before the city approves that application and/or issues issuance of permits. Um, staff is highly recommending this condition. This is, we don't, um, have any other project where we enforce HOA approval as an example, a residential example. Um, if a, if a project proposes to build a house in an HOA, it is their responsibility to ensure that they have HOA approval separately from the city. And so therefore, um, in order to be consistent, and again, the property owners' requirements can change with a, usually with a vote of their boards. Um, and so staff, um, is recommending that this condition be added. Additionally, a condition be added as previously discussed, that a special event permit are, are required for all events and they shall comply with all conditions related to that permit. Additionally, mentioned, any crop production within parcel one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three shall not limit and/or change the overall site hydrology and/or hydraulic capabilities of the retention basin design and function. Any modifications to the grading and/or hydrology will require resubmital and approval of grading plans and a hydrology report and any other studies required per the city engineer. So those are the three main conditions I do want to point out, um, that affect the specific plan and the regulations within it. Staff did list all the specific plan approval findings, um, in the staff report along with, um, the zoning amendment findings. As part of the specific plan, there is a proposed zoning amendment. Um, that zoning amendment updates the section specific for the Cochillin specific plan. Um, in our zoning code, the Cochillin specific plan, um, includes the list of tables and, um, and so staff is recommending obviously that planning commission recommend approval to council, um, approval of those changes required. This project does have, uh, a mitigated negative declaration, as was said, and was approved in two thousand seventeen, an addendum. It actually was originally approved in the county. And so when the city came, it, there was annexed, approved the project. It also included an addendum. Um, and so this further, is a further addendum that was reviewed by staff and our consultants, so it did go through plan review. As you saw, there is a, um, comment letter provided, that was provided to planning commission that we received shortly before the meeting, um, today. And, um, with that, the recommendation from staff is to approve the proposed resolution recommending the project to city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, uh, do we have questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Duffel. I guess I'll start this one off. Um, my first question is, uh, for our city attorney. Uh, in regards to the letter that we did receive prior to the planning commission meeting, and I did have time to go through it. Um, and when I got to the end, the, the, the end was the part that taught me the most, uh, as I read through it. And it was, um, about the project being, uh, sent back to the planning commission for review under the tiering provisions of CEQA guidelines, um, and figure out whether we need to do a, uh, an EIR or an MND on this particular project because of some major modifications. Those major modifications being, uh, like the amphitheater. Um, I, I, I can't remember what the other item was that was mentioned, even the amphitheater was, uh, was one of the biggest ones. So my question was, is how, how big is this, uh, proposed amphitheater? Uh, the other one was the hotels, I'm sorry.
I would actually defer that. I'm sorry, sorry if you said me. Um, I would defer the size of the amphitheater.
Was the, the, the size question wasn't for you, uh, Ms. Attorney. Uh, the, the size question was for Rebecca. The question for you, though, uh, was considering, um, these modifications as our review council, is this considered, um, minor changes or major changes? And I guess you can wait until after we get to the square footage.
I, I, I think with respect to, um, the, the environmental, um, issues that were brought up in the letter, um, the applicant, uh, you know, has, has worked with the city to do an addendum to the mitigated negative deck. There are conditions of approval and a mitigation monitoring plan um, that I believe staff believes is, uh, sufficient for this project. Um, of, of course, and I will say this, there are, um, legal teams out there who, who do, you know, kind of let, uh, sue cities, applicants, et cetera, for, um, environmental issues. So, I mean, with that, the city could always be sued, um, just like the applicant could always be sued for, um, you know, alleged non-compliance with CEQA. However, in this case, they did do an addendum, um, as to whether or not it is sufficient or not. Only a court could decide that. Um, but I think that we have gone through, um, the environmentals pretty well. In addition to that, I, just so it provides some, um, comfort, I guess, to the city, is they, meaning Cochillin, has, uh, part of the conditions of approval would be that Cochillin would need to indemnify and hold the city harmless for any and all lawsuits uh, related to this project and, and specifically as well, uh, related to the environment. So it is a risk, uh, but it's a very calculated risk, so I'll leave it at that. Hopefully, I have a question.
That did answer my question. I appreciate it. Um, I kinda had the answer, uh, to it for myself, but I don't think there was gonna be some folks in, uh, in the public like an answer to that. And then for my, uh, for my benefit, Ms. Deming, um, the, uh, size of the amphitheater and the hotel one more time, please.
Let me go back in the staff report. I apologize.
No problem, Ms. Deming. Thank you.
Um, we might be able to actually open it up to the applicant. They may know off the top of their head while I'm doing research, or we can continue with questions and I can keep searching for the.
I'm holding for an answer if the.
Okay.
Continue on with anything else.
Okay.
I think I'd have to go into the actual specific plan to look at the size of the property. There, you know, the environmental is gonna make an assumption on the actual like square footage because we don't have the proposed development permit on hand. So this, this proposed use is just specifically for zoning. So technically, the amph- amphitheater and, um, and hotel, we can, you know, I can look up the parcel size. But formal submittal of the layouts have not been approved. They have to get this approved first. Then they would be able to submit the actual development permit. This is basically just the approval of that zoning, of allowing a hotel and allowing an amphitheater in that section. Technically, they may never build a hotel or an amphitheater. They may decide to build something else that's in the allowable uses table. Um, so there's not a specific size, but I'm, you know, I could look up the parcel size that those are proposed to go on.
No, that, that's okay. I mean, I appreciate your answer and I think it's, uh, been clarified well enough for me as well as hopefully for everybody else out there.
Yeah, I think that, Richard, the important thing to understand with this is that we're not approving the building, or the construction, actually, of the amphitheater or the hotel, that that will come down the line when they submit the plans for that.
And they are proposing, you know, basically, they're hoping to be able to fit 175-room hotel, and it's, again, a 5,000-person capacity amphitheater. Again, the exact square footage has not been determined, as we don't have an application.
Fantastic. My last question is on the parking, the on-street parking. I heard you mention that there is no sidewalks on the inside, but I also made sure that you mentioned fire was going to go through, made sure roads go wide enough for parking. Do you know if that will account for pedestrian traffic, so that we don't have vehicle versus pedestrian accidents on site that's going to bog down our emergency systems? Or are they going to be walking in traffic with moving vehicles?
Most of these kind of cannabis uses don't really walk across the different uses. I think unless there may be, you know, going to the restaurant once the restaurant is built, or they use the community parking. But I think a lot of that is going to be used more for carpool type, or, you know, they are talking about putting covered parking over there, so for someone who might want to take that extra walk and park under a covered parking. But the entire parcel map was previously approved without any sidewalks. So even before, there would have been people walking across the properties to do it. Again, it's a private street. It's only the, you know, used by the tenants within the Coachella and Park. Obviously, I can't, not going to be any problem with people and cars. It's definitely, site is not designed for pedestrian cross-traffic, because most of the time, the tenant's going to park at their site, do their business, and move on, you know, with a business park. It's not a residential, you know, scenario where people are walking and shopping and trying to get back to the parking, or walking to a community center. So we don't usually see that big of an issue in an industrial park or in a commercial center or industrial center with that kind of issue. But it is all private. So it's not a public street where the, you know, where the city would necessarily be concerned of looking at those kind of crossings, because it is all completely private within the project.
Sure. I'm more concerned when they start having events and things are opened up, and there is a lot of traffic going on, and folks are parking on the streets, and you've got 15,000 cars rolling through the park.
So that's all stuff that we are going to have to look at with the police department and the special event. The cannabis and the regulatory permits has really big restrictions on access. And because the Coachella and Park has a master security plan and a master fence plan, each unit is not separately secured. So there's going to be limitations on people at the amphitheater being able to park within the park. They're not really going to be able to do that unless there's separate parking areas that are completely, that are isolated from the interior of the park. So if, for instance, the community parking area gets opened up for the event, they're probably going to have to either transport people, because they're not going to just be able to walk through the park. The regulatory permit wouldn't allow the public to just be able to walk through the middle of the park.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, thank you. That was a mouthful, actually. You got covered four of my points already, which is good. Okay, who's up next? Augustine, you have anything?
No, no questions at the moment.
Okay, Jim?
Two of mine have already been answered, and not right now, then.
Okay. I have a couple of things left over from Mr. Duffel's onslaught. One of them is, when it comes to parking, because I was very concerned about that, and I asked that the fire marshal at least take a look at the plan. I think it would be very smart, at this point, with regard to parking, is if they want to have on-street parking of any kind, that there needs to be designated slots. In other words, they need to just not have a willy-nilly approach to this, but to have actually designated parking slots along the road. They could do that, just with markings, so that they would have an idea, and we would have an idea, of exactly how much street parking they're going to have, and make sure that access and egress is safe, particularly for the fire department. So I don't know if that could be added or not, but that's something I would like to see. A little concerned about the equipment encroachment. Now, I know that they're saying that it's not going to be a public nuisance. When it comes to actual development, I'd really like to see some kind of assurance that that's actually the case. It comes down to a trust of verified that thing. And... Okay, let's see. I think those were all answered by Mr. Duffel. The question's about parcels 30 and 31. Okay. Is that something that we would be developing in the future?
Again, all of this is an approval of a zoning document. All development has to go through an application process, depending on the specific plan. If it's a permitted use, it's a development permit approved by staff, and if it's a conditional use, it comes back to the planning commission. So any and all development is future development, really, other than what they're currently building.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that's all I have. Okay, does anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chair, in regards to your comments about the equipment setbacks, is there anything that sticks out to you, out of curiosity, as far as what kind of setbacks you might like to see?
Specifically?
If you can.
Well, I'm not sure that I would, only because it would depend on the circumstances. I would think that there should be some kind of mechanism in the approval process where the city can look at and say, "Yeah, that meets the standard," or, "You know what? You're really over the board on this one."
Okay. I guess I've got a question for Ms. Deming, then. And that would be, I do share the same concern as Chair Buchanan. And I would also have to say that if there is a way for us to do that, to create some sort of an equipment setback, I would not be opposed to seeing something like that. I know we still have the public comments portion to go, and this is just questions and answers, but I wanted to make sure that I got that answer for myself, and I mentioned it to you as well.
So yes, you know, obviously, you can recommend to city council, propose changes to the specific plan and design guidelines, and that could include minimal setbacks specifically for the equipment. You can even do maybe minimum setbacks based on the height of the equipment, like if you wanted to, or if you just wanted to allow all setbacks at five feet from the front property to ensure enough landscape buffer. And again, they built in a lot of flexibility, so if there is additional setback reduction requested, it could come back to the planning commission. But if you guys wanted to put a very specific five feet in the front, and three feet on the sides, or three feet on all sides for, you know, setback, that is absolutely something that you can recommend to council when this goes forward.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, excellent. Anybody else? As far as asking for specific setbacks, I think I'm kind of opposed to that. I think we really need to have some flexibility in there. Perhaps we could set a minimum, but again, I think it depends on the equipment. If it's a small generator, or a garbage enclosure, or something like that, something like that, they wouldn't be that big. If it's a water tower, that might be another matter.
Larry, can I just say that I remember reading through the documentation, and they show specific examples, you know, illustrate, or photos, I guess you call them, of how they're going to hide things, how they're going to enclose them. And there is some description, and it doesn't look unreasonable to me, actually, from what I recall seeing in the paperwork. But, you know, I didn't spend a lot of time on that, but...
I did see that as well, and I thought, well, that looks pretty good. But I just want some assurance that that's actually going to happen.
Right.
How many times, excuse me, we've all been around this before. How many times have we gotten assurances that, "Oh, yeah, we'll take care of that"? And then it ends up that we're looking at it going, "What?" We've had a number of those situations in the past. I like stuff spelled out, stuff more specific. That is just me talking, not the commission.
So there's, you know, additional requirements could be made instead of specific setbacks? Maybe instead of only screening from the crosswalks, it can have, you know, all equipment under 10 feet shall be screened, and anything taller shall be painted to match the building to try and blend it in a little. Obviously, we don't want to see on a water tower a 20-foot wall in front of it. You know, that'd probably be more obtrusive than the tower itself. But we can, you know, we can put in something that says that, you know, something, anything under six feet shall be screened behind a wall, anything taller shall be painted to match the building, you know, could be an example. So that they would have to put a combination of a wall. If it's taller than 10 feet, they'd put the wall and then put, you know, put the building. Now, some of the equipment comes in a container, so it's already in a wall. One, you know, one project that we've been talking to, basically, the generator is inside a container, so the container to paint it to matches is already hiding the equipment in the setback, if that was to be proposed and moved forward. So we see all sorts of equipment that's already kind of hidden, and painted to match really does work. But again, I'll leave that to the commission to make their recommendation on how they'd like to see stuff move forward.
That makes perfect sense to me. Okay, who else got something? Do we have, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. So I'm doing that right now. Do we have testimony from the applicant?
Mr. Chair, so we have several members of the applicant's team here. I will, I don't know who wants to go first, but I will move them all over.
Okay, excellent.
I'm only here to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Any questions?
No questions.
No, Mr. Chair.
No, shall we move on?
Let me call on them each, so just give them opportunity to address the commission. Mr. Dickerson, are you wanting to address the commission at this time?
Oh, he doesn't look like his computer's unmuted. Kenny, can you come over here, please?
I said, "No, I don't have anything to add." I thought Rebecca did a great job covering all your questions. The only thing that I would say is, with regards to the equipment setbacks, this is a request of parcel owners in the park to be able to do that, to max out their lots and their square footages. And now, all the equipment that's out there and the way it's getting screened really does look great.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Osaro, are you wanting to address the commission at this time?
Not with respect to this particular matter, but I do for the, I believe, the draft conditions of approval, which is, I think, next.
That would be now, where we're discussing the project and recommending of approval. So if you want to comment on any part of the project, including the conditions, now would be the time.
Okay. So again, I want to make sure that I'm referencing the correct document, the draft conditions of approval for specific plan amendment SP-20-4, in particular, condition number 12. My question is, why doesn't this condition specify the DIFs per the Mitigation Fee Act?
Excuse me, sir, did I hear that right?
I can ask it again.
Thank you.
Regarding condition 12, why doesn't this condition specify DIFs, development impact fees pursuant to the Mitigation Fee Act?
Chairman, if I may, so this, obviously, this project is a zoning document, so there's not specific DIF fees that'll be paid on the actual specific plan. So this is a generic condition stating that DIF fees are required at the time of the actual development, and specifically at the time that a study is prepared.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I may as well, to the extent I can answer some of Mr. Osaro's questions, should the commission request that I do so? Number one, I wouldn't want to necessarily do it during a public testimony. I'm more than happy to do it afterward. But specifically with respect to this one, we are currently in litigation with Coachella and directly on this matter. I would request that the planning commission keep this condition as written. And of course, it would, of course, be noted in the record of the, that the applicant does in fact, you know, object to condition number 12. But with that, I'll conclude my statement, and then wait until after the close of the public hearing to answer any other questions that may arise.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Duffel. If I may, offer a suggestion. We can get all of the questions out there, and staff to take those questions down on a notepad and paper. I would be more than happy to ask staff to elaborate on those questions after the public hearing.
No, I'm actually doing that right now, but you go right ahead.
Fantastic.
All right. So, okay, Mr. Osaro, anything else?
Well, am I being asked to continue with asking my questions with regards to condition number 12?
You can ask them with condition number, I mean, condition number 12, or you can continue on with any other comments you have, yes.
No, I still have additional questions regarding condition number 12.
Okay. Generally, the way things work in public comments is you make a statement, and we do not respond to it.
Well, then, I don't need to make a, I'm not interested in making a comment about it. I would like to ask questions, so can you let me know when I'll have an opportunity to do? I would like to ask questions, so can you let me know when I'll have an opportunity to do that?
I would say, now, excuse me, I'm just going to say this as chair, is that the way you would do that is set up some time with the staff to ask your questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is public testimony. The applicant does have a right to ask questions. Whether or not staff or myself will actually have the opportunity to get those answered is another story, but it is public testimony. I do recommend that we afford the applicant and/or the representatives time to at least ask questions. We don't, do not necessarily have to answer them, but it is their right to be heard.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and ask the questions and hopefully we can get answers to them. So with regard to condition number 12, it states that with respect to the development impact fees, and specifically, and I quote, "in recognition of the need for improvements causing impacts of any development within the 2010 annexation area," close quote, and it goes on to state other things in here. But I want to focus on the words "in recognition of the need for improvements causing impacts." My question is, why is Coachillen being required to recognize, quote, "the need," close quote, "for improvements causing impacts of any development within the 2010 annexation area before such a determination has been made by an updated NEXIS report"? Why is Coachillen being forced to make a recognition of something when the NEXIS report has not yet even been updated?
You have any other questions, sir?
That's my question. Can I get an answer to that?
Not at this point.
When will we get an answer to that?
We'll have to discuss that with staff, but at this point, right now, we're in a public hearing and you've had an opportunity to be heard and you've had an opportunity to ask your questions, which will be answered by staff as they are able to do it. Now, at that point, is there anything else you have to do right now?
Yeah, I actually have other questions. I'd like to finish my questions on condition 12. So no, no answer to that one. It's my understanding that with regards to the conditions of approval, the applicant, Coachillen, is going to be required to execute this document within a specified period of time after or in the event that this commission approves it. Is that, is that a correct statement?
I don't know what your agreement is and we'll have to wait for an answer from that from staff. Move on.
Well, condition number five says, "within 15 days of final approval by the planning commission, the applicant developer shall submit in writing a statement indicating that he or she has read and agrees to the conditions imposed herein." So we don't really have a whole lot of time if you elect to approve this as written today. Okay, so I'm going to go to my next question because I take the non-answer as what I just read, a statement of fact. The next one is, why isn't the annexation area, it's capitalized in condition 12, why is it not defined? Is that a defined term? Can anybody answer that one?
Well, first of all, I'm sorry, but I just have to take control of the public hearing. We're not going to be answering questions at this point. The staff has gotten the questions and will answer them in due course. Okay, next.
Next question is regarding condition 12. Development impact fees per the Mitigation Fee Act are designed to address impact citywide, not a specific project or parcel. Is that everybody's understanding?
I'm going to defer any questions. I can answer that one and would answer that one, but I will not at this point because I do not believe that we should be answering questions at this point. So you go right ahead and ask your questions.
Okay, so no answer to that one. The next question is, why are the specific improvements in other facilities and needs, or no, what are the specific improvements in other facilities and needs in the Coachillen specific plan? And I, and those are words that I quoted right from condition 12. Quote, "improvements in other facilities and needs in the Coachillen specific plan." What are they? And if you just want to say you don't have an answer for it, or you won't answer, just state that for the record and I'll move to my next question.
Sure, we won't answer that one. Go ahead.
Okay, next question is, what are the, quote, "required mitigation measures," close quote, that are referenced in condition number 12? No answer?
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Osaro, at this point, if I may, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do with condition number 12.
What am I, what am I trying to do?
I've instructed my client at this point, which currently is the city, that obviously we're in litigation with respect to some of the DIFs. We all know about that. Please feel free to answer your question, to ask the questions at this point during public testimony. I would, I would prefer it if the chair does not engage in some kind of back and forth with you. Please provide testimony. You will have ample time to do so, but at this, at this point, there is no room for this back and forth during public testimony. I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay. So then, let me just ask this question then, then counsel. At what point should we be asking questions? For example, just simple questions like the definition of things. At what point do we ask that so that, so that this process can move forward, so that this document, if it is approved, can then be executed? At what point does that happen?
So at this point, you can ask any questions you'd like. This is public testimony pursuant to a hearing, okay? That does not mean, however, that the planning commission chair nor members of the planning commission will have specific answers to your question. Staff may have some answers. I may have some answers, but again, that would happen at the close of the public hearing. And again, this is going to be recommended either negatively or positively to the city council. So you will then have another opportunity to present your testimony at the city council level.
Okay, so the next question, or the question I just asked, because the follow-on is a follow-on to it. I asked, what are the required mitigation measures? We got no answer. The next question is, are those measures specific to the Coachillen project or property? I'll ask the question for the record. The next question is, are the, quote, "other required mitigation measures," close quote, based on the mitigation fee act? That's the question. If the answer is no, why is this statement included in condition of approval number 12, which focuses on the development impact fees, which are supposedly supposed to be limited to the mitigation fee act? That is the question. And the final question is regarding condition number 12, why doesn't this condition include language about Coachillen's right to contest or challenge the NEXIS study that is purportedly being conducted? The language in here just contains a statement that the DIF shall be payable upon the completion of the updated NEXIS study, but it does not contain a statement that Coachillen has the right to challenge it. That is my question. Those are all of my questions regarding condition 12.
Hey, thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
I have one more follow-up. I didn't know we were going to discuss the conditions on this one. So for number eight, when Rebecca went into details regarding that the community development department does not want to be responsible for ensuring that the POA has approved the designs. Previously, that was already approved in the original specific plan. And what we have done so far, it's a two-page, one-page, double-sided POA approval form that our POA review committee signs off on and immediately provides to the planning department during the development permit stage. It's not extra work for that team and I don't want that as a condition to be removed or added in there because it has already been approved that a POA approval is required. This is not an HOA. This is a property owners association with an industrial business park and it's a little bit different animal and should be treated as such.
Mr. Chair, this Commissioner Duffel, I have a, I have a question for the city attorney if we have no other, once we have no other public comments, if I may.
Richard, I think you have to come up at the end.
Once we are done with public comments, if I may.
Okay, we are not finished yet, I don't think. But certainly you're up as soon as that's done. Anybody else have a public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Brian Flynn.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Flynn, you have the floor.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm not hearing anything.
Mr. City Clerk, I think he said something about a phone. Is there maybe another phone number that he may have called in on? Because I think early on, there was some comment about doing a phone call in due to audio issues. So I'm not sure if there's another number in the system for him to speak.
Yes, I responded that someone, person registers are given various numbers that they can call in to.
It says he's trying to connect via phone right now.
Okay. Okay, I'm just going to say this live. Mr. Flynn, if you can hear me, you can try phone number 877-853-5257. Webinar ID is 848-1242-0126.
Gerald, is there anybody else to queue?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we will, we will hold on for this one.
Mr. Chair, can we get that phone number and ID repeated one more time, just in case the gentleman does have an opportunity to write it down?
Sure, go ahead.
877-853-5257 is the phone number and the webinar ID is 848-1242-0126.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
There we go. Thank you all for dealing with that. I can hear an echo, which is not good. Sorry, my microphone got messed up on my computer halfway through COVID, so I appreciate you all sticking with me. My name is Brian Flynn. I'm commenting tonight behalf of the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility. We submitted a comment letter earlier tonight, I believe you have in front of you. I'm going to try and briefly summarize it. And I know there's a lot going on with this project, but I'm just going to focus on the environmental review and the addendum for the hotel and the music venue. While it's true, as we've said earlier, you're not actually considering the building plans tonight for the hotel or venue. When those plans are proposed, they are going to rely on this environmental review that you approved tonight. So it's important that we aren't kicking the can down the road and allowing these new uses to avoid any scrutiny. But the core of this issue is that SEQUEL prohibits the use of an addendum for the addition of a 175-room hotel and the 5,000-person capacity music venue. The California Supreme Court explained that an addendum to a previous mitigated negative declaration is not appropriate if the proposed modification may produce a significant environmental effect that has not been previously studied. So here, you can't use an addendum if the hotel and music venue create new significant impact or substantial increases compared to the previous environmental reviews in 2008 and 2017. So specifically here, it impacts related to noise and related to wildlife that weren't addressed in 2017 or 2008. Interestingly, for the noise issue, the addendum under consideration tonight clearly admits that there's a new significant noise impact. It's on page 3-31 of the addendum and says that the noise levels associated with future build-out could reach up to approximately 67 decibels and therefore expected to exceed the conditionally acceptable noise levels. And the addendum introduces a new mitigation measure to deal with the new significant impact. And SEQUEL prohibits using an addendum if there's a new significant impact. So the fact that there's a new mitigation measure in and of itself demonstrates that this new change with the hotel and the venue are having a new impact that's not mitigated by the 2018, sorry, the 2008 or 2017 environmental review. And so in addition to the noise impact, we had a wildlife expert, Dr. Sean Smallwood, review the addendum. And he found that there's significant impacts to wildlife that are unaddressed and unmitigated by this addendum or the 2017 or 2008 reviews. He was very concerned with wildlife vehicle traffic mortality, window collisions due to now we're going to have a four-story, a lot more glass out there, and then also the solar energy facilities and certain, and also introduction of noise and nighttime lighting from the music venue. There's a big issue that the mitigation in 2017, within the 2017 addendum for wildlife, is that it's not really working. One of the big issues is that that mitigation from the 2017 addendum that will apply to the new project, as for mitigation fees paid to a conservation plan, Riverside County Conservation Plan, that conservation plan accounts for less than half of the special status species that are likely to occur on the project site. So when you have these increased issues from increased traffic, you're going to have more bird collisions, more animal collisions with traffic, you're going to have more window collisions now due to a four-story building, you're going to have more issues with light at night, and the mitigation measures that are being applied from 2017 won't necessarily reduce those to less than significant level. And so just to reiterate, the addendum to a previous mitigated declaration is just not appropriate if it may produce significant environmental effects. The noise impacts and the wildlife impacts are significant here. The addendum admits that there are new noise impacts. And so because they will create these new impacts, this city can't rely on an addendum here. Who is requesting the commission refrain from approving the project until you can prepare a mitigated negative declaration or an EIR, which is the appropriate SEQUEL document for this type of situation. Thank you so much. Thank you for dealing with my technical difficulties. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Okay, are there any other? Gerald, do you have anybody else?
There's no additional testimony.
Okay, thank you. No additional testimony. We're going to go ahead and move on and close the public hearing.
Chairman?
Actually, excuse me, I'm going to offer an opportunity for rebuttal. Actually, excuse me, I'm gonna offer an opportunity for rebuttal. Uh, I don't know where I'm.
There we go. We're trying to get all the applicants turned on to see how they, who would like to rebut.
All right, good.
I would defer to our environmental engineering team who prepared the documents to comment and reply to his statements.
And they are present?
Yes.
All right.
I believe they're mostly on the phone. I believe one of them is on the Zoom, Gerald, if you just want to.
Okay, I see like five different numbers, so I'll just allow them all to talk.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anne, do you wanna address the noise and SEQA question?
Hi, you're live in front of the commission.
Roma or Katie, can you guys chime in, please?
Hi, this is Roma Stromberg with Gondini Group. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm the noise consultant, and I did the noise impact analysis. And so I can speak to the issue of noise impacts to the project, which is my understanding, SEQA doesn't technically require us to evaluate the impacts to the project. But we do because we wanna know, we wanna have nice interior noise levels and comply with state code, which I don't, which applies to residential. So they specifically asked me to do an analysis of the traffic noise to the project so they could install windows and sliding glass doors in their high-end hotel that would provide a nice, quiet environment. So this is often done at the, you know, for residential projects at the building permit stage. So I don't see how preparing an MND is gonna change my analysis or my, or my recommendations for the STC ratings for the windows and doors. It's nothing's gonna change. I'm not, I'm not gonna have to alter my noise study at all. So that's what I have to say about that.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else wanna speak?
Anne Sergiel was having trouble with her audio, so she is dialing in right now to see if that works.
Okay.
While we're waiting for Anne, this is Kenny Dickerson at Coachella. I'd like to also bring to your attention the, on the biology, all the bio mitigation measures have all been handled 100%, and I wanna make sure that everybody in this committee knows and understands the original project, Coachella represents a 72% reduction across the board in impacts from the original approved project of the intermodal hub that was, that this, this ground sat on. So this is a fantastic reduction to an approved project, not a, not a negative one.
Gerald, I see a new number pop up in the attendees.
Yes, that should be Anne.
Hi, this is Anne. I'm so sorry. For some reason, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, for some reason, my, my microphone wasn't working on the Zoom either. So my name is Anne Sergiel. I'm with Ecore Consulting. And we prepared the environmental document for the Coachella specific plan and then also for this addendum. And I'd like to point out that none of the changes proposed by the applicant would result in an impact that is new or substantially more severe than was originally described in the previous SEQA documentation. The project remains a mix of commercial and industrial land uses. That's similar to what was previously analyzed. The applicant has identified some more specific land uses described based on market demand, which is what triggered reevaluation. The applicant prepared new air quality, greenhouse gas, traffic, energy, and noise analysis without knowing what the impacts would be and was fully prepared to do a new document if required. However, after analysis, all the impacts were determined to be less insignificant or less insignificant with mitigation, and these changes did not require major revisions to MND. Merely having a more focused discussion on impacts to more specific land uses does not on its face mean that the impact is new or trigger additional environmental analysis. And I'd like to note, there was a discussion on the size of the hotel and the amphitheater, and they were deliberately estimated to be on the larger end of what the parcels could accommodate so that we could capture all of the impacts in the revised studies. Roma talked a little bit about noise, so I'm gonna skip that. But as far as biological resources, the MND addendum provides mitigations for species covered under the Coachella Valley MSHCP and also species not covered in the MSHCP. We evaluated all of the biological resources that were on the site. And it is true that not every resource is covered by the MSHCP. The letter writer brings up mortality caused by vehicles citing studies for wind energy projects and traffic mortality studies in Northern California, but provides no context as to if these mortalities would happen with this project or even if the impact would be significant. The letter writer also brings up the potential for mortality for birds from window collision, but admits that the prediction of window collision impacts is speculative and uncertain. The letter writer cites studies from Urban University campus in Ohio, a study in Manhattan and other urban areas, and bird safe standards from San Francisco. However, the letter writer assumes that this project would have similar impacts in the city of Desert Hot Springs as in these highly urban areas. The letter states that the majority of bird deaths would be bird protected under the fishing game code, but more bird study was, no bird study was provided. However, the study conducted for the project states that the Coachella Valley MSHCP did not identify the project area as part of a biological corridor or linkage. I'd also like to note that the purpose of the Coachella Valley MSHCP is to allow development where designated and conservation were designated. The project is in compliance with the Coachella Valley MSHCP, which contemplates the impact of development on sensitive resources. And that's all.
Okay, thank you very much, Anne. Who's next? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Gerald, do you have anyone?
Everybody who could speak at this appropriate time is on the screen. I don't know what order and which are speaking in. So if you do first off.
I was gonna say, I think we could turn it back to Catherine and Kenny Dickerson to see if they, if they're, if that's all they wish to say or if there's something else that they'd like to respond to.
Uh, that's it. I think the science speaks for itself.
Kenny, you have anything?
No, sir.
All right. With that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, at this point, because it is 10 till 8, we're gonna take a 15-minute break. We'll come back with discussion and final decision on this, okay? 15 minutes. Recede. Recede. Yeah. Recede, right?
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Jennifer. You are not muted, just to let you know.
Okay, thank you. Nope. Yeah, I, I'm on recede.
What do we have on? The box is... I have no speech. I'm... Nope.
We should be back pretty soon. Okay, is everybody back? Augustine, you back?
Yeah, I'm back.
Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, Gerald?
Yes.
Let's restart the meeting, please. So, I'm moving on to Planning Commission's discussion and recommendation. Who has anything to say on the commission?
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Commissioner Duffel.
Okay.
I would like to ask our city attorney, considering this is in litigation right now, there was a lot of questions that were raised during public comments. If any of those questions are answerable in this venue, and the city attorney would like to take the opportunity to answer them, I would love to hear.
Mr. Chair, if I may, there actually is one. As you do know, the item in litigation is specifically related to development impact fees. So just to let the Planning Commission know, I'm not divulging any confidences or anything like that, but that is kind of what's in litigation right now. The item that I could answer is condition number five. I'm looking at a different screen here. It says, "Within 15 days of final approval by the Planning Commission," and technically that's to read, that was a typo, "within 15 days of final approval of the city council." Again, this is an amendment for the specific plan, obviously has to be approved by the city council. So the developer, Council, Leni Sorrow, brought that up. I appreciate that. And obviously, this will be given over to the city council in time permits. So with that, with respect to some of the other questions, I cannot answer any of those.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Duffel?
No, Mr. Chair, that was all I had.
Okay. Okay, who's got something else?
Not this time.
Commissioner Aragon, you have anything?
No, no questions from you.
Okay. Jim, you have anything?
No, sir.
What do you have?
I don't have anything right now.
Oh, you don't? Okay. Well, I'm glad we'll go on to a long diatribe here, but basically, I have some concerns about this specific plan. And the concerns I have are, first of all, the internal parking. I would like to see some kind of accommodation for specific internal parking to be so that it's set up in a way that's absolutely protecting the aggression, aggress, and also any public safety concerns. Our public places. I understand this has changed, but I think somebody has to approve the artwork. I have seen, in the past, many years ago, when I was CCAC Commissioner, that I saw an attempt by somebody to claim a huge amount of money for what was basically a block queue. I was not really impressed with that, and so I would like to see some conditions around that.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to answer your questions as you go through, or wait till you are done?
I have several, so you can go right ahead. If you'd like to go ahead and start with the first two, that's good.
Okay, so discussing about the parking, we've heard the concerns, and I drafted this condition for you guys to consider, to add, and it says, my proposed draft condition would be is, "If on-street parking is proposed or used, the spaces shall be striped and approved by the fire department to ensure access."
Excellent. That would be perfect.
And in terms of the art in public places, that is, the specific plan lays out all of the requirements for the art in public places. It does mirror our municipal code. It basically says they have to apply, and council has to approve the art in order for them to use the art as art in public places. So it's not staff approving it, it is council.
All right, excellent. That's also good. And thank you, that's change from the past. Okay. Let me go down this list here. I'm going to say that the number eight POA, I understand what Ms. Dickerson was saying, and I appreciate what she was saying. However, it doesn't matter whether it's POA, or OOA, or EOA, or whatever the hell it is, it doesn't matter. Here's the deal. The city shouldn't be responsible for the work that the organization's doing. So that needs to be fixed. It needs to be dealt with. So number eight, as far as I'm concerned, is off the table for me. Okay, as far as Mr. Flynn and his concerns are concerned, I agree with Mr. Flynn that these should be addressed. However, I think that all the work that we've done in the past two iterations of this indicates that we have the environmental concerns under control. So the noise issue is something a little bit new to me, but I'd have to take another look at that, but that kind of caught me by surprise. But the rest of it, I just don't see it. I'm sorry, I don't. As far as the DIF stuff goes, I'm sorry, but I can't comment on that. We're in litigation. It's not our job. So with that, those are my comments. There's some stuff I really, really, really like, and there's some stuff I really, really, really don't like. But I gotta tell you, on balance, this is a project that we're wedded to. There's some stuff, again, attitude, things like that bother me a great deal, but that's life. I think that basically, if we can deal with the parking, art in public places, which I think we've dealt with, and the understanding that we're not gonna give in on POA, and that the DIF funds are just gonna have to be dealt with separately, then I'm okay. Thank you, I'm done.
Mr. Chair, can I get a clarification, please? Staff's recommendation looks good to you with an addition for the parking modification?
That, and, yeah. That, the understanding that we're not, we're not caveating on number eight.
Okay, I want to just come right out and say I'm very, very acceptable to that, and with this being such an important issue, like all of them are, but this one has a lot more numbers and letters in it, I would ask, I would like to make a motion that addresses that concern, as well as staff recommendation, because I do like staff's recommendations, but I need a little bit of help from staff to put that together so I don't butcher it.
That'll do it.
Okay, so the motion is that the Planning Commission approve a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending that the city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs certify the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration, adopt the mitigation monitoring plan, approve the Coachella and specific plan amendment, and approve an ordinance recommending, amending chapter 17.200 with an added condition that states, "If on-street parking is used or proposed, the spaces shall be striped and approved by the fire department to ensure access."
Now, I want to make sure this covered your concerns, Larry. It sounds like it does, and I am good with that.
I believe it does. I think that the other stuffs can be dealt with on the staff level, and then if it comes back to us, then we'll have more to say about it.
Okay, well, then I would like to make a motion as Rebecca Deming just read.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, Augustine, thank you very much. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, with that, let's go ahead and vote. We needed a roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Aragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Vice-Chair Nando?
Aye.
And Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, with that, we've finished our agenda. There is an opportunity right now for people who didn't have an opportunity before to make public comments. Is there anybody out there who wants to do that?
This would be on a non-agenda item, Mr. Chair. And I don't believe we have any, but...
Okay. Do we have a chair, planning commission member report? I don't have anything.
Nothing this month, Mr. Chair.
Anybody? Welcome back, Augustine, by the way. We missed you.
Thank you.
And frankly, I guess I'm gonna say more. You know how I am. We're gonna need all four of us for a while, because the opportunity for the city council to approve a fifth member is actually not gonna be available again until September. So we may not see anyone until September, obviously. So we're gonna have to stick together and make sure we show up, so we have a quorum. Okay? With that, I'm done. Any member have anything they have to say? Community Development Director?
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to note that we are taking the last piece of the general plan to the Planning Commission Council, which has been adopted. We are in the process of trying to get our housing elements certified with HCD, with the state. I just received notification late today that the final documents have been posted on the website. I'll be sending out a notification tomorrow to everyone who has signed up for notification of the general plan, but I wanted to make sure that everybody who was listening knows that the maps and the adopted general plan are now on our website. I also wanted to note for everyone's use or need, we now have a GIS system, a geographic information system, so it's an interactive mapping for zoning and general plan. So that is currently posted right now on the general plan update page. We will eventually move it to the main planning department page, but if anyone wanted to open that interactive map, they'd be able to put in an address or a parcel number, and it would zoom to their parcel, and they can turn on the different layers, such as zoning and the general plan land use map. So that's a nice additional feature. I know I've shown it to you guys, the internal version, when we've had meetings, and we've wanted to point it out, point out specific parcels as we went through the general plan and zoning update, but we now have a public edition that is on our website. That's all I have.
Okay, excellent. Everybody's had enough time to comment. Do we have any further public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. At that point, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and we will resume on the 28th with the special meeting for item number three. Okay, we're done. Thank you.